Hello and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's Standing Committees Meeting for Wednesday, September 30th, 2020. My name is Kim Clark-Baskin and I am the Assistant City Clerk. With us today, we have our sign language interpreter, Nick Miller. The following is a list of legislation up for preliminary approval by Pittsburgh City Council. Finance and Law Committee, Mr. Lavelle is the chair. We have new papers. We have Bill Number 733. Resolution Amending Resolution 838 of 2019, which authorized the mayor and the chief equity officer to execute relevant agreements with neighborhood allies to implement the creation of financial empowerment centers within the city of Pittsburgh. Bill Number 734. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Finance to enter into an agreement with the Allegheny County Bar Association to provide legal advertising to the city of Pittsburgh for performing state mandated advertising of treasurer sales. Public Safety Services Committee, Mr. O'Connor is the chair. We have Bill Number 735. Resolution Amending Resolution 246 of 2020, which had previously amended Resolution 493 of 2019 and Resolution 133 of 2018, authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh into a third amended professional services agreement with Johnson Controls for Continued Security Camera Integration and Support Services. Public Works Committee, Mr. Coghill is the chair. We have Bill Number 730. Resolution approving the recommendation made by the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure that Mulberry Way be paved with asphalt in accordance with Section 417.06 of the Pittsburgh City Code of Ordinances. Bill Number 731. Resolution granting unto the brochure association their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense the ability to install a new subsurface water meter vault for new domestic and fire service at 314 Brownsville Road, 34th, 3rd Council District. Bill Number 736. Resolution Amending Resolution 549 of 2019, authorizing the mayor and the director of Public Works to enter into an agreement between the city of Pittsburgh and the Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership for services rendered by Clean Team ambassadors within the South Side PED by extending the contract for a term of two years at an annual cost not to exceed $150,000. Land Use and Economic Development Committee, Mr. Wilson is the chair. We have deferred papers. We have Bill Number 645. Resolution providing for the designation as a historic structure under Title 11 of the Code of Ordinances that certain site known as the Shrine of the Blessed Mother located off Wakefield Street in South Oakland, 4th Ward. Human Resources Committee, Mr. Kraus is the chair. We have Bill Number 732. Resolution providing for a professional services agreement with Big Picture Lab LLC for video production services in an amount not to exceed $25,000. And Intergovernmental Affairs, Ms. Gross is the chair. We have Bill Number 299. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Works to enter into a project cooperation agreement or professional services agreement with grounded strategies for the purposes of implementing a city farms pilot project in an amount not to exceed $45,000. That concludes the reading of the legislation up for preliminary approval. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee Meeting for Wednesday, September 30th, 2020. Council will continue to meet virtually on Tuesdays and Wednesdays at 10:00 AM until further notice. All meetings will be live streamed on the city's YouTube channel. Our first order of business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are or may be before city council and profanity will not be permitted. We will now have our first speaker. You have three minutes to speak. Please give your name and neighborhood for the record. Our first speaker is Aikuhana Maumakina.
Greetings of peace, light, and love. My title is Aikuhana Maumakina, the Grand Inca of the Iroquois Confederacy of Aboriginal American People. What I would like to speak to today is a few matters of concern. One being that there are not enough programs for our children, our the youth. The youth ultimately become the leaders of tomorrow. We need to refocus on them in order to change the systemic problem in regards to crime. Our children are not given the chance to be explorers, to learn tech skills anymore. The schools have been eroded away for the public sector. I remember tech being a big part of the schooling. I remember home economics being a part of schooling. Those things have since gone away. And if we reconsider what's going on, we would look at the youth and realize that they need our attention. The playgrounds in these neighborhoods are rotting away. While you're building and constructing a new park close to downtown, the inner-city playgrounds are deplorable. I urge you to invest in the youth. Teach them how to repair automobiles, how to build homes. Invest in the youth for they are the future leaders of tomorrow. Young doctor programs are needed for the inner-city youth. If you want to avoid crime, then give them something to do with their minds. An idle mind is the devil's workshop. Indeed. And we are willing to assist in that. We have journeys to justice. We cannot think about, forget about these children. And I wanted to remind city council, and I will continue to remind you of the Jordan Miles, the Bernard Sanders, the David Streeters, the Leon Fords, Jerry Jackson, Jerome Smith, Michelle Rankin. All were either permanently injured or now deceased due to the training that these policemen received. They are here to protect and serve. You need to move into an environment of how may we better serve you because they work for the citizens of the city of Pittsburgh. And we are here to remind you of your duty and your charge and your oath to uphold, to protect, and to serve the citizens of this municipality, the city of Pittsburgh. We will be watching. We will be listening. And we will be here to aid and assist as our people are of great importance to us, known and unknown of their heritage.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Kotekibey.
Yes, greetings. This is Kotekibey, Iroquois Confederacy Aboriginal American People. And I would like to remind the city council of a little history of our people with the Treaty of the Delaware, 1778, in which case it was said in that treaty, a few things. One, that our lands will never be invaded. Two, the face passages through the region of what's called Delaware, which encompasses what people call today New York, New Jersey, and Pennsylvania, and the promises that were made in those treaties. And the ongoing relationship between the Treaty of Fort Pitt and Aboriginal peoples of the regions of the Delawares, our ancestors. And to bring everybody's attention back to those times where those treaties were in place and our people were acknowledged and recognized as being Aboriginals and the sovereigns of the land. Today, the municipality seems to be overlooking those facts, giving more attention to the sociopolitical constructs and not as much attention to the rightful heirs descendants of the land. Which is a slap in the face, by the way. So I implore city council, as we have sent out a few invites for meeting, to sit down at the table to discuss Aboriginal peoples that living near the city of Pittsburgh or around the city of Pittsburgh in this area. So wise legislation can be made when dealing with our people to restrain your people from overstepping their bounds and acting an ultra virus contradictory to the constitution that everyone took an oath to support, protect, and defend before they assume their post at their office. So we must talk about these things and we must bring an end to a lot of the injustices that our people are continuously suffering, continuously suffering since the beginning of what people modernly know as colonization. So I'd like to leave on your mind a word from our ancestors, which is Inla Kala Kain, which means the light within myself honors the light within yourself, and we owe it to our future generations to make it right, not only for the Aboriginal peoples of the land, but also for the citizens of Pittsburgh as well. And with that, I yield.
Thank you very much. There being no further speakers, we will now move on to our standing committee agenda. Would a clerk please take the role?
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill?
Here.
Ms. Gross?
Here.
Mr. Kraus?
Here.
Here.
Mrs. Kelsman?
Ms. Strasburger?
Here.
Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Mr. Lavelle?
Here.
Seven members present.
Thank you. Our first committee of the day is Finance and Law, which is chaired by myself. First new paper is Bill 733.
Bill 733, Resolution Amending Resolution 838 of 2019, which authorized the mayor and chief equity officer to execute relevant agreements with neighborhood allies to implement the creation of financial empowerment centers within the city by adding four additional years and increasing funding to offer the service through 2023 at a cost not to exceed $150,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Bill is recommended. Bill 734.
Sure. I am here, by the way, just so you know.
So noted. Bill 734, Resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Finance to enter into an agreement with the Allegheny County Bar Association to provide legal advertising to the city for performance state mandated advertising of treasurer's sale.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That'll take us to our invoices. We need a motion to approve the invoices.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Invoices are approved. That takes us to interdepartmental transfers. We need a motion for the transfers.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The transfers are approved. That will take us to our Public Safety Services Committee chaired by Mr. O'Connor. We have one new paper, Bill 733.
Bill 735, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 246 of 2020, which had previously amended Resolution Number 493 of 2019 and Resolution Number 133, which authorized the mayor and director of the Department of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the city into a third amended professional services agreement with Johnson Controls for Continued Security Camera Integration and Support Services at a cost of $587,400, extending such agreement for one year and increasing the overall agreement compensation to $5,690,002.
Motion to approve. Discussion.
Discussion. Councilman O'Connor?
Yes, I have been briefed by Public Safety starting in February about this conversion from for our camera system. I don't know if anybody from Public Safety is there, if they would like to discuss. I have no further questions because, as I mentioned, I've been briefed on this already. I don't know if other members have been or not. So if there's somebody from Public Safety that wants to explain, other than that, I'll leave it open to council members for discussion.
Good morning, Councilman O'Connor. Stan Shaq from Public Safety Technology Manager. I'm on if there are any further questions.
Any further questions? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 The bill is recommended. That will take us to our Public Works Committee chaired by Mr. Coghill. First new paper is Bill 730.
Bill 730, Resolution approving the recommendation made by the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure that Mulberry Way be paved with asphalt in accordance with Section 417.06 of the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 731.
Bill 731, Resolution granting unto the brochure association their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense to install a new subsurface water meter vault for new domestic and fire service at 314 Brownsville, 30th Ward, 3rd Council District.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 736. You're on mute, Madam Clerk. You're still on mute, Madam Clerk.
Okay. Bill 736, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 549 of 2019, which authorized the mayor and director of Public Works to enter into an agreement between the city and the Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership for services rendered by Clean Team ambassadors within the city's South Side PED by extending the contract for a term of two years at an annual cost not to exceed $150,000.
Motion to approve. Brief discussion.
Yeah, second.
Councilman Coghill?
So, you know, I'll defer to you, Councilman Kraus. I'm just curious as to what they do. Are they?
So, I'll be happy, if I may, sure. So these are the expenditures of funds that are collected through our parking enhancement district, which is now in its fourth year, I want to say. I think this will be the, yeah, this would be the second time that we would have entered into contract with the downtown partnership to supply our clean team for the East Carson Street corridor, which is clearly defined in the legislation as to where parking enhancement district funds can be expended. To date, we took a bit of a hit on the funding because of COVID and the big hit that a lot of food and beverage businesses took. But we seem to have stabilized. We're we were traditionally averaging about $4,200 a month. We're now around $2,400 a month, so just about 50% of what we were collecting. But that is enough to support our clean team, which is about $10,000 a month. We have two people on the street seven days a week doing cleaning, power washing, removal of graffiti stickers, weeding the tree pits. All those kinds of things are all part of the contract. To date, I want to say on parking enhancement, we have either gotten very close to or exceeded $700,000 in collection. All of those monies are returned legislatively to the parking enhancement district via legislation, and they provide for cleaning, infrastructure, and public safety. So this is the cleaning portion of it. We're re-entering into contract again with the downtown partnership for a cost to not exceed $150,000 for two years of the clean team to be on the street at no cost at all whatsoever to taxpayer. Everything is provided through parking enhancement district funds, which are collected Friday and Saturday nights at the meters from 6:00 to midnight. And so people that choose to come and participate in East Carson Street corridor actually pay for the clean team to be on the street.
Well, that answers most of my questions. Thank you, Councilman Kraus. I mean, I really love the idea. And I don't know if it was kind of your project that started all that or not, but I love the idea taking because I know there's many issues, many problems come with all that parking. But to take some of that revenue and put it into a team of people. From what you described, it sounds like they just lock the corridor and pretty much do anything from weeding, to picking up litter, to anything they see. Is that right? And it's been successful.
And I'd be happy to share this with the council if you'd like. We do monthly reports to the the planning forum, South Side Planning Forum. And every month, they do a complete breakdown of the hours where they were geographically, what was cleaned, how many tonnage of litter was collected, how many stickers were removed, how much graffiti was removed. And at a time, we were averaging 16,000 pounds of garbage in a 30-day period. 16,000 pounds in a 30-day period. So you can imagine what it would be like if they weren't on the street. Here comes Councilwoman Gross. Oh, yeah. Go ahead, Councilwoman Gross.
Right. So, I mean, for members who weren't here when we created, when Councilman Kraus created the parking enhancement district, the logical nexus really is that there's so much pressure on this neighborhood from the visitors it gets, right? That it was draining resources from other parts of the city and the city budget, especially like policing capacity and the DPW capacity. And so the important part is that we added new parking revenue. And in Councilman Kraus's case, by extending to nighttime collection. Most of our neighborhoods don't have that. And so it was, it was an increment. It was like an additive amount of new parking revenue. That, so a fraction of the total South Side parking revenue is diverted that that fraction is. And it's because we were able to add the smart parking meters that we could know that you paid that parking meter in the evening hours and not during the daytime hours. And it's all able to be found in a database. And I mention this because we also voted many years ago now on dynamic pricing for parking. We really have not seen the additional revenues from dynamic pricing. My own district is angry and resentful with me because they also wanted the parking enhancement for improvements in the Strip and Lawrenceville. And we're still working on that. I have legislation drafted. The needs that that additional parking revenue would fill are different in the Strip and Lawrenceville. It'd be like pedestrian safety, so many, I mean, literally 8,000 new parking spaces that are mostly private, but a lot of public as well. And so the there are cars going where they didn't used to go. Where it used to just be empty kind of riverfront warehouses are now, cars and pedestrians are in conflict, and there are people being killed in broad daylight in the Strip District by cars. So, you know, we need, we need, so many different mobility, infrastructure improvements for safety and for moving people back and forth in this whole corridor between downtown, the Strip, and Lawrenceville. And we're drafting that now, so I hope that council will also be a meanable to that discussion because we would not be taking any parking revenue away. But there are places that don't have meters that honestly should. Many, many city blocks in the corridor I just mentioned, we are not getting any parking revenue. And we could add parking revenue there. They've been waiting and asking for meters for the streets because people are parking and commuting to downtown from, you know, the 30th and the 40th block, lower, all the way up into lower Lawrenceville, and taking those spaces because they're not metered, especially in the Upper Strip. And even Upper Lawrenceville, I think, there are places where there are new meters that are desired by the neighborhood. It'd be adding. And then frankly, there are places where, if you'll remember, I'm sorry to go on this, but just to remind us, folks, it's been so many years. The dynamic pricing especially, there are sections of maybe the same very long street where everybody wants to park. I always say, for example, in Bloomfield, like in front of Tassara's. And so you kind of need, you could raise the prices just so there's turnover. And then parts of Liberty Avenue in Bloomfield where no one wants to park, like in the evenings, like down by the post office, maybe. It's a little changing dynamic now because now there's retail and apartments down by the post office, but that was the example that I used to give five years ago. But the point is that we can look at these dynamics and there are really prices, there are places that should have their, not just new meters, but if existing meters, the cost per hour really should be higher in order to make sure that the meters are serving not commuters or not people who are parking there for days on end. And we're getting out of good revenue. The businesses get the parking spaces they need to be etc. So that, expect that conversation to be moving forward for my district as well. Appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Strasburger?
Thank you. I, we've been thinking about this a little bit as well. There was a lot of interest from the from the business owners on Walnut Street in a shady side to replicate what this South Side was able to do with extended parking, enhanced parking collection in the evening hours. And given that, Councilwoman Gross, you are also interested in this, is there any reason why we wouldn't or shouldn't look at this as a more citywide approach if there are business districts throughout the city and council members say, hey, I'm interested in my business district too? Why it wouldn't make sense to do it that way if we could have legislation that would define several different business districts, all in one big legislation? Or is it, I haven't looked at the legislation recently, is it such, is it defined in such a way that the actual usage of the money is distinct for every single district and so therefore they would need to be separate?
That was a problem for mine. Like, we didn't need the policing and DPW.
Could I jump in? Does that be okay?
Yes.
What, let, I think Brasha is on the call. And if not, I'll call her and ask her if she would redistribute legislation to both Councilwoman Gross and Councilwoman Strasburger. And then we could have a nice sidebar. I'd be happy to go through how it is that we created what we needed. But the legislation that created the South Side Parking Enhancement District was specific to the South Side. So I would believe that we would need to create specific legislation for each of your districts as it stands right now. There may be a way to do it differently. I'm not sure, but I think that is how that would work right now. And there was one other thing, and it just, it left my mind. But we, oh, well, one of the things I will add is that marking or parking meters are important to the success of this. You're only going to collect the revenue, you're going to collect by the amount of meters that are installed. And so we're working off, I think it is between 670 to 690, 670, 690 meters, which is pretty significant. For over the years, had we not experienced the sort of the the shuttering, if you will, of food and beverage businesses because of COVID, we would have exceeded a million dollars by this point, which is staggering in its thought process that we would leave a million dollars on the table that doesn't come out of taxpayer pocket to help keep, you know, safe, clean, and, you know, vibrant. These business districts, especially these food and beverage businesses, that we have finally learned how very important they are to the economy and how important it is that we protect and invest in food and beverage. And this is one way to do that, to keep environment safe and clean and vibrant and without additional cost to taxpayer, which is incredibly important. One of the things that the legislation does call for though is that there has to be a certain amount of There has to be a certain amount of residential permit parking surrounding the Parking Enhancement District. So as to not force those cars into residential neighborhoods. And I know that can be a bit of a challenge if you have not quite secured RPP in those areas yet. But I'd be happy to take this offline with both of you and talk as much and as often as, as what you might need to create these areas for your business districts.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. That's. In this day when bids and nids are non-starters, we have the PDP, we have Obid, but in other places they're non-starters. This is a way to sort of define that revenue creatively. And I just, you know, I'm happy to have that conversation offline. I opened it up just in the off chance that there were other council members aside from Councilwoman Gross who were interested in the conversation. So thank you, Councilmen, and Councilwoman, I'll look forward to talking more.
Councilman Kalkiel?
Yeah, Councilman Kraus, you're going to be a valuable asset. On this, obviously, if it does expand to other districts, and that's really why I brought it up. I really think it is a good idea. And I think of Councilwoman Gross and some others where I think it'll benefit, not so much in my district, but, but that's okay. And I love the idea where that's flexible, where we could use that revenue for whatever the reasons are in that district. You have your own set of reasons or your own set of issues down in the South Side, and I know Councilwoman Gross does in Lawrenceville and those areas as well. So I just want to be clear that, say, Councilwoman Gross were to adopt this. This is going to be coming out of new metered spaces and nighttime meter.
It wouldn't in mine for nighttime, probably. It doesn't have to be what the, the, the fundamental principle is that it's additive, right?
Yes, right.
Imagine that you triple the price per hour. At, you know, very, very active meters. I'm just throwing that out hypothetically. I don't mean to make anyone, you know, who owns a business in the middle of the Strip District panic right now. But just hypothetically, right? That is new money. Over and above what we've been collecting. And again, we could take this offline. It is a significant shift when we used to set parking prices per hour at city council by entire neighborhood. And then we shifted to dynamic pricing and put that power at the parking authority. So there's a whole different dynamic that we hypothetically should be really optimizing our revenue. And it has, it has actually borne out that way, but we could be doing better. We haven't been doing it in a, in a way that is more, we can more finely tune it.
Sounds like a good thing, finding new revenues and you can count on me to be supportive of other members who wants to write for their own district. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Wilson?
Yes, Councilman Kraus, I just want to, you know, thank you for giving us all this information about the legislation and the program. Could you just elaborate on, so since the parking revenues are half of what they used to be because of the current situation? I may have missed this, but is there a trust fund or a certain bucket that this goes in that it continually draws from? And there's not like half the cost, but we're, like, are we just projecting what we would get once coronavirus is over to fund this?
Yeah, so can I? Can I jump in? So a couple of things. Revenue, parking meter revenue that has been established, which is contributory to our pension obligation, is completely off the table. Can't do it. It has to be newly created revenue, as Councilwoman Gross was saying. We had never collected parking revenue after 6:00 PM anywhere in the city. And so our revenue collection is six to midnight, two nights a week. And completely fits within our obligation to sequester those other parking meter monies towards our obligation for pension. The. I guess the, the. Challenge, I guess, that you, that you would face would be to. Look at your, your district holistically. I, and, and this really is, is not any of my business, but as a, just as a suggestion. The North Shore and the amount of traffic and the amount of meters that are there would be. A perfect opportunity for a Parking Enhancement District to help offset the, the impact, which is good. We want people to come and visit and, you know, participate in all the amenities of the city. But there is a cost that comes to that, which is largely borne by residents who are paying the property tax. To provide the revenue to do these kinds of, to do these kinds of things. So. Our, our reduction in, in the revenue we have been able to collect, it is about 50% reduced. But I think there's a silver lining in there in that if we are still collecting almost $2,500 a weekend. On 670 meters, there is still a very strong interest in people coming out to food and beverage business. To supporting food and beverage business and understanding the importance of food and beverage business to the economy. So that is a bright spot, I think. The, the high point again was about 4,400, but that's when everything was fully activated. We expect to get back to that number at some point in time, but it will be. Dependent upon the number of people that choose to come out and participate once again in, in large business districts like the East Carson Street. I'm actually encouraged that we're at around 50% of what we were bringing in. I think it speaks, I think it speaks well to people's commitment to socialization, to being out and about, to, to being around one another. And, you know, breaking bread, if you will, with, with one another. So 2,400 is bringing us right around 10,000 a month, which is about what we spend on the clean team. It's ten, between 10 and 11. We have a reserve right now. I, I'm afraid to venture how much that is. But it is somewhere around the $200,000 mark. We're being very careful about how we spend that. They are publicly collected dollars, so they are legislated. We don't spend anything like you see here now without coming back to council to ask for approval for the expenditure of the, of the money. Because they are publicly collected dollars. There's a small fee we do pay for enforcement. It is about $300 a weekend that goes to the Parking Authority for the enforcement of the, of the meters and that comes off the top. And then, of course, we contract for the services, which are known as block by block through the Downtown Partnership. We piggyback on their contract and use block by block to do it. And I got to tell you, these guys are absolutely amazing. Seven days a week, there are people on the street and whether it is, you know, power washing garbage cans or collecting, like I said, an average 16,000 tons or pounds of garbage. Month. I know the last couple of weeks, they've been focused on 77 new street trees that we have, making sure that they're weeded and mulched. Keeping the curb lines clean, removing graffiti stickers. Once the construction is done on the East Carson Street Quarter, which is a massive penthouse project, we'll probably want to do some power washing, which will come out of this as well too. And I can't stress enough that these are supplemental dollars that, you know, Bill Jones and Mary Smith are not covering. That they are covered by people who choose to come in and participate in the business district. So it's a win-win all the way around and council's always been supportive and I thank you very much for being so.
All right. Thanks. Thanks for that clarification.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
Just, just if I could add on and for clarity, our pension funding comes strictly from the parking tax. The actual street and lot revenue goes to our general fund. With that being in mind, given the year, the current budget situation that we're currently under, I believe, Councilman Wilson, you are representative on the Parking Authority Board. It may worth having a conversation about where can we pick up potential additional revenue from increased metering? Who, I believe it was Councilwoman Gross who talked about parts of street where people don't park. If you look at Bigelow Boulevard as an example, directly across from Shinley High School, well, the former Shinley High School. People will utilize that as, as metered and people will park there. If you go across the street from Censor Avenue, almost no one uses that metered block. But if you go just a little bit further back on Bigelow Boulevard from where some city steps come down, all the way to the Bloomfield Bridge. Everyone parks there every single morning for free and walks into Oakland to go work. And so we're losing all of that revenue. So it just may be worthwhile having a conversation with the Parking Authority about where can we be picking up additional revenue in a year where we're short 100 million?
Definitely. Yeah, those are conversations that we're having right now. So I'll include the areas that everyone's mentioning. I appreciate that.
Cool. Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Is recommended. That takes us to Land Use and Economic Development Committee chaired by Mr. Wilson. We have one deferred paper, Bill 645.
Bill 645, resolution providing for the designation as a historic structure under Title 11 of the Code of Ordinances. That certain site known as the Shrine of the Blessed Mother located off Wakefield Street in South Oakland Fourth Ward.
Motion to approve.
Second. Very brief discussion, if I may? Yes, Councilman Kraus. Okay, thank you. Yeah, so we had the public hearing last week. And we had a couple of speakers, residents from South Oakland, received a couple of letters, read a statement by the mayor who came out in full support of the nomination. For those of you that might not be aware of this, it is, the statue is, is very lovingly referred to as Our Lady of the Parkway. It is a statue, a shrine to the Blessed Mother that was established by Oakland residents back in 1954-ish. Excuse me. And has been maintained by those volunteers this, this entire time. And while there was a proposed construction project taking place, which would have come up Bait Street and into that portion of South Oakland. There was genuine concern that that monument could be lost. And I began getting calls from residents concerned that. It could possibly be lost. And so that started me on this journey to work with Sarah and Matt to nominate the statue to be an historic landmark. I am the nominator of it. It has passed through the Historic Review Commission unanimously. It passed through the Planning Commission unanimously, and I'd like to have it pass through city council unanimously as well too. And if anyone wishes further information, I'm happy to share it with you. But I appreciate your support today. Thank you. Any further discussion?
I'm very confused on this. Who is the owner of the property? I guess, I don't understand this because we're not actually nominating the shrine.
The, if I may, the owner of the property is the City of Pittsburgh and only City of Pittsburgh property is in the nomination.
I guess my question though is we're not nominating the shrine, right? We're nominating the land around the shrine.
I would argue it would be inclusive, but the shrine is part of it, yes.
We can't nominate the shrine. So we can't, the shrine, we can't nominate historic, we can't nominate the shrine itself because that. We can't, my, 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 my CNN keeps playing, but we can't nominate, I think that's my CNN, we can't nominate the shrine itself.
So the technicality of those questions are probably better suited for Sarah. And if you would like, I can send the entire packet of the nomination documentation to you for further review. You're on mute, Councilman Burgess, if you're trying to chime in. Yeah, you're still on mute, Councilman. While he works that out, I know Councilman Wilson wanted to chime in.
Yeah, sorry, I feel like I keep, I keep having to ask Councilman Kraus questions today. I just had a question about the, the land. So I guess we, we've currently been maintaining the land already since we own it. And this designates it as, the land is historic of the property. Is this, like, is there a plan to continue to maintain this or do we have clean, clean and lean do this?
No, this has always been maintained by volunteers.
Okay, great.
Yeah, from the, from, it's very origin. It has been maintained by volunteers. The, as I understand it, the city, the property is city property. There is one very small part of parcel that is owned by the church. But it is not part of the historic nomination and the statue is. So I think it would be better, it'd be a better discussion if we were to bring Sarah in to ask your, your couple of technical questions. And let her, let her respond. So Madam Clerk, if we could reach out to our historic preservation planner and then come back to this bill? And we can answer those technical questions?
We'll get her on the line.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So this bill will be held until Director Quinn can join us. So we'll move on to our Human Resources Committee chaired by Councilman Kraus. We have one new paper, Bill 732.
Bill 732, resolution providing for a professional service agreement with Big Picture Lab LLC for video production services. In an amount not to exceed $25,000. Of the total cost, $12,500 will come from the HUD Trust Fund and $12,500 will come from the Commissions Community Development Block Grant Funding.
A motion to approve.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill will be, bill is recommended. That takes us to Intergovernmental Affairs Committee chaired by Councilwoman Gross. We have one deferred paper, Bill 299.
Bill 299, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Works to enter into a project corporation agreement or professional services agreements. With grounded strategies for the purposes of implementing a city farms pilot project in an amount not to exceed $45,000.
Motion to hold two more weeks.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, would you permit me, if I may, just quickly? The entire packet on the nomination is included with our council packet today. So you already have what it is that you need, Councilman Burgess.
Okay, let's finish voting on the last bill. All those in favor of the two-week hold, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill will be held two weeks. That takes us back to the currently open bill, which is Bill 645. It has, I'm looking, I don't believe Ms. Quinn has joined us yet.
So for the sake of expediency, we could vote today. The councilman does have the complete packet of, of information on the nomination. That should answer any technical questions that he has, but if that doesn't suffice, I'd be happy to meet offline with he and Sarah both to answer whatever of remaining questions he might have.
Mr. 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 Chair?
Yes.
My understanding is that what they're actually doing is they're not nominating the shrine. Because you can't nominate the shrine because it's, it's, it's religious, which I said from the beginning. What they're doing is to protect the shrine, they're, they're going to nominate the land around the shrine, the public land around the shrine. The shrine itself, though, is not being nominated. But there, which, which I don't necessarily oppose, I just think it's a backdoor way again. To take away the property rights of the owner of the shrine. I think that, because the, the whole intention is to protect the shrine, but I don't really, if the church wants the shrine protected, I'm in favor of it. But again, it's the church's call. It should not be council's call to decide what the church wants. Because what we're doing is we're not nominating the shrine, we're nominating all the land around the shrine to protect the shrine. Without even talking to or having any input from the owner of the shrine, which is the Catholic Church.
That is not true. Councilman, that's not true. It is.
It's absolutely true.
No, it isn't. It is owned by the volunteers that built, established and maintained that shrine. The church had nothing to do with it. It was done by residents as volunteers.
Church, the shrine, the land the shrine is on is owned by the church.
The land is owned by the city and the small parcel of property that is owned by the church is not part of the nomination.
Church owns the shrine. The land that the shrine is on is owned by the church.
That is not true.
I think it is true.
Perhaps if you had attended the public hearing, it would be, it would be beneficial to your understanding of the nomination.
Perhaps if you would, I mean, let me stop here. Um, I don't, I, that's my understanding. I'm looking at a memo from Jack Miller from the Law Department. And that's the, that's the indication. And that's the, that's the indication that the law department has sent me. They may be an error and I may be reading it wrong because I'm old and my eyes are bad. But I just think that this, we're going down a dangerous, again, we should have the owner's, owner's support. That's all I'm saying. Whenever we're doing something for owner of a piece of property, we should have the owner's support. And whether the, if the owner supports it, I'm, you know, I'm with it. If the owner doesn't support it, I'm not with it. I just want to clearly know because the owners, there is an owner of it. Whoever the owner is, I want to know what they're, whether they support it or not. That's all, that's my only concern.
And we are the owner of the land that is nominated.
Who owns the shrine?
I would argue the volunteers that established, built and maintained the statue for generations.
The shrine has an owner. It has a legal owner. Every piece of property in the city of Pittsburgh has a legal owner. We do not own the shrine. Someone does own the shrine. Whoever owns the shrine, we should figure out whoever that is, what their stance is before we decide to take away their property rights. That's all I'm saying.
Right. And I, you know, Councilman, you are more than welcome to vote against this today. It had unanimous approval from the Historic Review Commission. It had unanimous support from the Planning Commission and it has a public statement in full support by the mayor. I don't know what else I can tell you to do. Vote against it, Councilman. You're welcome to do so.
Sarah is on.
Great. Sarah? Sorry, I don't see her, Madam Clerk.
I see her name. She's currently muted.
Yeah, she's muted. Yeah, she's, there she is.
Sarah?
You're on mute.
You mute Sarah.
Okay, go ahead, Director.
Are you here? I still don't hear her or see her. Sarah, hi, good morning.
Hi.
There appears to be a technical question that's being asked by Councilman Burgess as to the ownership of the shrine itself. And if we are nominating the land as historic or if we are nominating the shrine as historic or nominating both as historic. I think I kind of condensed those questions.
Well, I mean, I, I can tell you, we, we are not including the parcel that is owned by the Catholic Diocese.
Right.
So.
Who owns the shrine? And is the shrine, and is, is the shrine on public land or is the shrine on land owned by the Catholic Diocese?
Let me pull my documents. I will find out. I think that might come down to what GIS says. Now, are you, now, what part exactly are you talking about? Are you talking about the big concrete piece? Or are you talking about like the smaller altar and the, the benches and that stuff? Or the statues or just the bigger altar for the bigger Mary statue?
I mean, that, this is your, I can't answer that question. You can tell me, you know, who owns the various parcels and what's on them, that's fine.
Okay. Well, I mean, I can tell you, all parcels listed in the nomination are owned by the city with the exception of twenty-nine C twenty-two.
What's on that parcel?
Let me find the map and see.
I know I'm out of order, but you can see from the packet that it's a kind of a scattered site situation.
Yes.
With a path and park and there's multiple things across multiple places. I've not personally been there myself.
I'm just curious, I'm just, I'm already really concerned about what's on the, with, with, who owns the shrine and whether the shrine is on the property owned by the Catholic Church. That's really my, my concern.
Well, the shrine is the entire site. It's not just one parcel.
Okay. And what's on, what's on the site that the church owns?
Let me, let me see, sir. I will see what I can find. Probably in the nomination.
I just am very, and I'm, I'm sorry, but I'm very gun shy about taking away property rights explicitly from churches. It's, it's, it's what started me on this bandwagon of thinking that the, that the historic nomination process is inherently and fatally flawed because of taking property rights from religious institutions. When I was first, when I was first a member of council, that's what they did to the Salvation Army. This council took away the property rights of a church for, and I believe, very, very, I think, sub suspect and somewhat discriminatory reasons. So from that day to this day, I have been extraordinarily just concerned that we never do that again. So, and I'm not saying we're doing it now. I, I'm asking the question if we are.
Well, no, here's, here's, here's the, here's what the intent was from the very beginning. And I talked with Preservation Pittsburgh about this and talked with the, the folks that put the shrine together. Um, okay, the intent is to not, there's, there is no intention to do any sort of PLI citations or anything like that on this property. What makes this parcel, what makes this site special is the fact that it has evolved over the years only at the behest of those that use it. There was, there's no, there's no regulation, there's no, you know, oversight by the diocese. There's none of that, okay? So nobody, there are no rights to be taken away, I guess is what I'm saying. Because then the intention was to never cite anybody for anything. If you, if you, if you go out there and you take a look at this place, part of the charm of it, if you remember Fairhaven Church we did down on Route fifty-one, one of the great things about that, that church is, is that it was started by Welsh miners basically with anything they could find that fell off a truck that they could put together to make a building to worship in. And so the fact that it's got donated vinyl siding on it now would make some folks think, well, what's, you know, that's not historic. But the reality is what the folks, the, the descendants are doing now is a continuation of what their forebearers did years ago. And so, yes, it is historic and that's the same way this, this is. And, you know, we, we obviously aren't going to, didn't want to include anything from the church because we know how they feel about that.
Say more about that. Say more stuff right there. Say more about that. You didn't want to include the church's properties because you know how they feel about that. Say more about that.
Well, I mean, the thing about, the thing about it is, is that, you know, the, the, the people that, the folks that put this together were from, I mean, and you can read it in the staff report. There was, you know, Italian Catholics, German Catholics. A whole bunch of different groups got together just from living in the neighborhood together and decided to put this together. And so, um, you know, they didn't work with the church directly on this. And, and, and we know how the church feels about their property being listed. So we just, we left it out and we felt that there's enough integrity remaining in the other pieces, in the other parcels to reflect what the intent of the original creators were. So, and-
What's on the property that's owned by the church?
I, I'll be honest with you. I don't, there's, that's not listed here in the nomination.
See, this is, and again, I, I, this is, this is the process, I think, that's unfair. I think it's unfair to take away property rights of owners without their consent and to do, and do it sort of this way sneakily to surround it and take away all the property rights around the church's property while talking to the church. And as she said, we know how the church feels about it, so let's just not talk to the church. Let's take everything, make it historic, not talk to the church, not include the church in the process. That's wrong. You're taking away their property rights. That, that's what this is. It's a taking. We should not do things like this without, this is not right. Every time we do it, it's wrong. It's wrong the first time we did in multi-tempel. It'll be wrong the second time we do it. It'll be wrong the third time we do it. It'll be wrong the fourth time we do it. It'll be wrong the fifth time we do it. It doesn't matter the story. It doesn't matter what it's worth. We should not be taking property and we shouldn't be doing it this way. If the, without, now, if the church participates and says it's okay, I'm with it. But you can't just say, well, you know what, church, we don't like what you believe. So we're going to take everything else around you and, and isolate you. So you can't, if you want to later develop that property, we'll make sure you never can. This is what this is, I guess, intended to do. It didn't, it just didn't look right to me when it, when it came up because I know you can't, you can't nominate religious structures. I know that. And I couldn't figure out exactly what we're trying to do this. I don't think this is right. No, I, I, I'm not telling other people how to vote. But this is, this is an example of what we do as this council that I've told over and over again is not right. Historics resident, we should not take people's property rights. We shouldn't do it.
Who's next? Because I'm ready to chime in.
So we have Councilwoman Gross next for first round. Okay. Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you. All right, so I think this is a conversation that we need to have for another day. And Councilman Burgess, I've told you before that I'm happy to work with you on these things. I really noticed that there's a difference between denominations and how they handle property rights. So for example, I ask you to think back to the example of when you first got on council. Did that parish or congregation own that property?
Yes.
Right. So in other cases, especially with the Roman Catholic Church, the congregation does not, right? And so the-
That's right, the congregation did not own the property. The denomination owned the property.
Okay.
Salvation Army is a denomination. So the individual church did not own the property. The denomination owned the property.
Right. So they, we have this, like, you know, this, I think, a a question in front of us about how we define, like, who, who is the church? Is it the people that we represent or is it these kind of overseers from far away? And that's really the conversation that I'm hearing from my constituents, right? They feel ownership because they've invested their own blood, sweat and tears, dollars in life, entire lifetimes. You know, sustaining literally the, the property and the congregation. I'm trying, I'm struggling again with vocabulary, but I think this is actually part of the debate that's important, that's in front of us. And maybe relevant here, too, in the way I heard Ms. Quinn talk about the people who own and created and donated their, their labor, their time, the supplies. And that it belongs, they feel it belongs to them. And then maybe a diocese, in this case, really only claiming ownership of the land. Really not claiming ownership of the structure on the land, whether even, whatever size structure it is. And then other cases, like in the areas that I represent for St. Rayfield's in Morningside for Regretty and in Bluefield and possibly more parishes to come. The parish has tried to claim ownership of the property and been, you know, in a legal, is in a legal battle. At the Vatican, under both civil law here and at church law in the Vatican has an appeal to claim ownership against the overseers, church, the larger denomination. So, you know, when we, when we talk about church, I almost wish we had better vocabulary here. Because it's, you know, is the church the people? Or is the church the, you know, international legal structure? I think it's an important question that it's probably not a question for this, for right now, today, Wednesday, but I think is a larger conversation than I would like to explore more.
Sure, I could go down that road. I can go down that road because that's my life. That's, if you want me to, I can answer that question. I started off Church God in Christ and then-
You can lecture at me, but that doesn't mean you'll convince me.
No, I'm not trying to convince you. I'm just explaining to you, I'm not trying to lecture and explain to you that there are two, because of Martin Luther and the reformation against the church, the Catholic Church, the Protestant Church was established. And there's really kind of two different churches, right? There is a church that is the universal church, which is what we think of. The word Catholic means universal, right? A large church. And then there's a local church, right? But in terms of denominations, denominations determine their organizational structure. There are some denominations such as the Presbyterians, Salvation Army, the Catholic Church, where the church is defined by the denomination. And so all Methodist, you know, African-American organizations like AME Zion, AME, where the denomination owns all properties. All properties are owned as a group, right? And so, so the Presbyterian Church is owned by the Presbyterian. The AME churches are owned by the AME church, right? There are some of us who decided that, you know, we'd rather have local control. The reason that I'm not an Episcopal priest, although I have some sympathy, sympathy, I was trained by Catholics. I understand the Catholic denomination. I, you know, they wanted me to be a priest, so I know a lot about being a priest. And the Episcopal nomination, I didn't become a priest because I wanted to be married and have children. Episcopal Diocese, unless you get married and have, and have kids. And so I, I was attractive to me at one point. But the priest, the reason I did not was because I believe in local controlled church, which is why I'm a Baptist. That's one of our fundamental tenets. And so the people who joined those local churches know from the beginning, from day one, that those churches have these quality determinations, that the Catholic Church is a universal organization, that the, you know, Methodist Church, those, almost all the churches, they have bishops as a signal. If it has a bishop, that means it is this, a large denomination. We're a connectional church. We have a law, we have a national body. Our national body is by voluntary purpose. We have a local, our point is churches know that on the front end, not on the back end. Members know that on the front end, not on the back end. And so even though they put their time, sweat and equity into these local churches, they have always known that the churches doesn't belong to them. And it's really part of a theological viewpoint as to how you define church.
I understand that, but again, you can lecture at me. But my point is, we can choose who we choose to represent, the international corporate body or our own constituents. I think we should take it off the table.
Yeah, and we can always use, as we have, we can always use public, we can use, council has the authority to use its land use and to use historic nomination as a weapon. We can always do that. We can rob churches, we can rob, we can rob owners of their property rights whenever we choose.
Don't imply that that's what I'm saying.
But no, I'm saying council can do that. Council has done that and council can do that. It doesn't make it right. Just because, just because we can do it, lots of things we can do, doesn't mean it's right to do. Taking away people's property rights is not right to do. It just isn't. And this is a taking.
Thank you. Councilman Coghill?
I just want to say, first of all, Councilman Burgess and I, I think we're on the same page as far as historic preservation goes. I think we see things in the same light. And I wanted to ask you, I am having a post agenda with them. I, I'm not quite sure to date, but, you know, I would, I would ask all council members to be there. But Councilman Burgess, I would ask you to be there as well to address the same issues that we're talking about, you know? So I agree with you in many aspects. However, I've heard you say many a times, and I agree with this, is if the landowner objects, then I am not for it, okay? In this case, it doesn't, I don't see any objections. I don't see it, certainly if it's on this, whether it's on the city of Pittsburgh property or whether on the Catholic Diocese's property, I don't see any objections. So, so I'll be glad to support it. It sounds like something that the community is invested in for many, many years now. And far be it from me to get in the way of that. So, but with that, you know, I have many concerns about the historic preservation and I look forward to carrying that conversation into, so that these things don't happen at the objection of the property owner. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you.
They didn't include the church or purpose. This is a sneaky way to do it because they knew the church would object. This is a sneaky way to do it because they knew the church would object to it. So they do everything around the church, don't include the church so they can take away the rights of the church.
Has the church objected?
The church isn't nominated. They did, is they took everything except the church's property. So they took everything around it, didn't include the church property. So they didn't have to give the church refuse it. So what they're really doing is taking away the rights because the church will keep its own property rights, except everything around it will be historic. So it won't be able to ever redevelop it, use it. It'll be encircled by this public land that we're nominating. So it is a backdoor way of making, of taking away the church's property rights.
So Mr. Chair, is this an interrogatory? Because then I'm going to jump in because I'm going to defend my position. So what is this?
So let's, let's actually not have an interrogatory. I did see councilman, I believe Councilman Wilson wants to speak and then I'll come to you, Councilman Kraus.
Thank you. So if the church, if the statue, which this was all, you know, for, is not on a piece of property that we are nominating. So Sarah, can you confirm that the church, the church is going to?
As I said, I think this is something we need to confirm with the GIS. What I can tell you is, is there's, you know, there are plenty of other things out there to, to make this legitimate nomination, including the large spring coming from the hillside, up, up sort of the walkway from where the largest statue is. So that's what I can tell you guys for now. I mean, we can, I can ask GIS to review it, see if they can find the information.
Question is, sorry. My question is, the statue is on parcel 29C22. Is that correct?
I did not say that.
I was asking the question.
Oh, no. I, I, I cannot answer that right now. No, I, as far as I know, there, the, the situation is this, is that I believe one of the, one of the ladies that worked on this originally had the parcel of land and she donated to the Catholic Church. And everything that sprung up around it was on city property, which is what is getting nominated is city property. So, you know.
So my follow up question is, well, that's, so what I've learned about public hearings, if, if I did attend, I'm not sure what just happened.
I'm sharing.
Sure, we're sharing the screen.
Beautiful.
Let me, let me look. Okay. I just want to make sure.
See, that's it right there, this, in the screen, right there, backup, backup.
Okay. I'm, I'm not part of, I'm not part of the, yeah, I'm not part of the, I'm not part of the sharing screen.
Oh, sorry.
I'm not part of this. What is happening right now on the screen is not, you know, not something that I'm doing.
Okay. So what's your question?
So we don't, we, we're not, this, you know, I see the document, the packet. And, you know, there's a nice paragraph about the, the statue, but yet we're not certain which, which parcel the statue is on.
Not at this point.
Okay. And we do not have confirmation from the owner of the statue of if they're going to.
No.
Leave it there or take it down?
No.
Nobody's going to do anything with it. Nobody's doing anything with anything.
But you are doing something with something. You're taking away the church's property rights.
Councilman, I'm going to chime in here because this is grossly.
Councilman Wilson has the floor.
Thank you. So what I've learned, I'm glad we're having this discussion because of what I've learned in public hearing is that questions are limited. And you're not really permitted to ask questions. So, so thank you for, you know, taking this time. So, all right. I mean, I don't know. I guess for me, I would like to know who, I would like to know which parcel the statue is on. And now you're talking about a spring and I'm just curious, like.
Well, this, every, everything is identified in the nomination and in the information packet you were provided before the hearing. So all that's in there.
Okay.
So the only thing that's not in there is a parcel, a parcel map showing the boundaries of the parcels. And I could probably.
I'm looking, I'm looking at that and I'm confirming to myself that this parcel is not the one that's being nominated. Okay. So that, that, that helped, that, okay. I understand. I understand. So we're really nominating all the parcels around it. But this is an effort to say that, you know, this is going to save the statue. Okay.
No, there's no, there's no saving. There's no, this is not about imminent danger to a resource. What this is about is about the people that put this together, talked to Preservation Pittsburgh and asked them to do a nomination. That's what this is about. And only, the only thing that it, the city property is getting nominated and that's it. That's what it is. And I could look up the parcels in about two minutes, but I would have to leave the conference call here, get on the zoning map and then come back.
That's fine.
Is that fine?
I'm going to chime in. Are we, are we having an interrogatory or not?
Wilson has the floor.
This is becoming Trumpian and I'm not going to be bullied.
Councilman. Councilman Wilson has the floor.
I'm finished.
To second round, Councilman Kraus.
So this. All right. This is not specific to a statue. It is specific to the entire location and everything that exists on the location, which the original parcel that was owned by, and I have her name here. Sarah, help me out.
I want to say Mary, is it Mary Toma?
I think it, it could be, was donated to the church. The remaining properties are all owned by the city of Pittsburgh. It is, it is not, we're not talking about just this individual statue. We're talking about the shrine as it is inclusive in everything that exists on that, on that site. And everything that exists on that site is on city of Pittsburgh property. The councilman can argue that we are taking away the rights of the church, but his argument is to take away the rights of the people that since 1956 have invented and maintained and expanded and cared for this completely unique Pittsburgh property that we wish to protect. This has received unanimous approval from the Historic Review Commission. It has received unanimous support from the Planning Commission. I wish to see unanimous support from this city council to protect what Oakland residents have invested here for generations. The councilman doesn't wish to see that. He may put in all the spurious arguments that he wishes to do, but it does not change the fact that this, the ownership of this is broad. It is the neighborhood of South Oakland collectively that owns the, the ornamentation on the property. And the property is owned by the city of Pittsburgh. Their full history of it is included in your packet. I am very tempted to read it right now to establish the importance of this property to the South Oakland neighborhood. In fact, I guess I'm going to. "The Shrine of the Blessed Mother is a unique representation of late Catholic religious devotion in Pittsburgh, founded and founded and maintained by a community from different cultural backgrounds who have established routine practices centered on the shrine. The shrine should be considered a traditional cultural site because of its cultural importance to a community of worshippers who, over the past seven decades, regularly made pilgrims worship at and cared for its upkeep. Integral to the understanding, the significance of the shrine to the community. It serves, the status of the shrine must be contextualized within the established doctrine of the Catholic Church. While the term shrine has differing meanings across cultural and religious practice, the Catholic Church establishes the meaning of the term in its own belief structure and canon law." And it goes on to describe what that is. "The community of worshippers deserve equal consideration and definition to help understand the shrine's significance. The stories that recount the shrine's creation provide insight into who initially comprised the founding members of the community, which it then lists the, the different founding members of the community. Architecturally, the shrine is comprised entirely of vernacular expressions that reflect individual contributions, visually respected of its worshippers. The wooden post," and it goes on to describe different things about the, about the actual structure of the site. "Under the integrity of, of this nomination, as a traditional cultural site, the Shrine of the Blessed Mother retains a high degree of integrity in location, setting, workmanship, feeling and association. The shrine remains in its original location on the cliff side of South Oakland. While the physical setting has become more burdened over time, the manicured landscape sparsely populated with trees remains a consistent reflection of the physical condition present at its founding, helps to distinguish the site from the foliage of the surrounding hillside and maintains its visible relationship with the Parkway East. The Shrine of the Blessed Mother also maintains its integrity of workmanship, feeling and association through the presence of architecture, structure and, and scriptural manifestation at the site. This site is completely envisioned, developed, constructed and maintained by community on Pittsburgh-owned, city of Pittsburgh-owned property."
So Chair.
Hold on. Are you, are you finished, Mr. Kraus?
I, I might be. I'm not a hundred percent sure. I can't believe we're having this conversation. It's Trumpian in nature and it is, the intent is to riddle the conversation with confusion and misrepresentation to satisfy the councilman's desire to see this fail. I'm gonna, I'm not done yet. I'm not done yet, Councilman.
Take your time.
I will, I intend to.
Come up with a good argument.
Stop, Councilman Burgess.
I'm still waiting for a good argument, but I haven't heard one yet, but I'm waiting for it. Keep going.
Councilman Kraus still has the floor.
I still have the floor. I'm digesting the, the, the councilman's self-importance.
I'm not self-important. By the way, I answered my own question. I sent you from the law department, but I told you from the beginning, the shrine is on.
You have to order Councilman Burgess. Councilman Kraus still has the floor.
So I'd also like to read a statement from the mayor that came out on August 11th of 2020. "Mayor Wayne Pudido issued the following statement in support of historic designation of the Shrine of the Blessed Mother ahead of its review by the Planning Commission." And so I quote, "Today, the Planning Commission will review historic designation plans for the Shrine of the Blessed Mother, a shrine located on a South Oakland hilltop overlooking the Parkway East and Monaga Haila rivers. The shrine was created by a diverse group of community members from the South Oakland neighborhood in the 50s and its location offers architectural and geological features that create this unique and diverse Pittsburgh fellowship. The shrine's highly visible location has historically provided a place of cultural significance for those who pass by it, including steelworkers working along the river who could look up and see their daily, during their grueling day. And it's commonly called Our Lady of the Parkway. The shrine is also visible to tens of thousands of motorists who use the Parkway East daily. Bernadette Fricki, a family member of one of the shrine's founders, recently said, "The Shrine of the Blessed Mother in Oakland should be designated as an historic site as it reflects the qualities that make Pittsburgh so special. Without government or private management or supervision, it was created and maintained by a diverse group of people from all over the city. It has been a place of inspiration, reflection and spirituality for Pittsburghers regardless of race, gender or religion. The shrine has weathered the economic and social changes of the past 60 years with the same resilience that has enabled Pittsburgh to remain a strong, vibrant and unique community. As a native Pittsburgher and a daughter of one of the founders of the shrine, I can think of no other property in the city that reflects the unconquerable spirit and love of community than the Shrine of the Blessed Mother. The Shrine of the Blessed Mother continues to bring together our diverse neighborhoods and visitors who come from all cultural and ethical backgrounds, ethnic backgrounds for pilgrimage and worship. The site was created by community, designed for community and maintained for generations by the community, for the community and deserves protection through historic designation." After the councilman's argument that somehow a small sliver of, of property that is presently owned by the Catholic Church, which was donated by the originator of this shrine somehow takes away their rights. And what about the rights of all of the work that, that, that surrounds all of the parcels owned by the city of Pittsburgh? And the, and the sweat equity of community for generations to care for their site? Those are the rights I'm fighting for. And I asked for your support today. Can we call the vote?
Mr. Chair. If I can now have a moment. So I sent in your email, all of your email, exactly the proof I have been saying. Notice that everything they talk about is the shrine. Even his own writing talks about the Shrine of the Blessed Mother. My family, my, my wife was Catholic. I met her in the Catholic Church. Her grandmother was a charismatic Catholic. Her aunt traveled to Metegore to see the miracles of the Blessed Mother. There was a statue of Mary in front of the house I lived in with my grandmother. I'm very aware of the reverence for Mary in the Catholic Church. The shrine, according to the law department, is located on L and B 29 dash C22, which is owned by St. Jockman's Church. That place, that parcel that the shrine was located on is exempt from the nomination on purpose because they can't nominate it. They are not nominating the shrine. What they are doing is nominating everything around the shrine so that they can take away the property rights of the people who own the shrine. The shrine is not being nominated. It is not because it's on Catholic Church. And they all know this. That's why they wouldn't answer the question 20 minutes ago when I said it, because they know this to be true. They are taking away the property rights of the Catholic Church. It may be for a good reason, but that's why the Catholic Church was not contemplated, considered, discussed. They purposely left off the one parcel that the shrine is on. Notice the whole conversations about the shrine, but we're not nominating the shrine. We nominate everything but the shrine because we can't nominate the shrine. But we can rob the Catholic Church of its property rights by doing it this way. This is a taking and it's still wrong. It may be for the right reason, but it's the wrong process. We should not be doing this. The shrine is on L and B 29 dash C22, which is owned by the church. And we should at least, you, you, don't you find it suspicious that there's no communication with the church? There's no conversation? In fact, Ms. Quinn said, we know how the church is. So they didn't want to talk to the church.
Start, start. I'm sorry.
I'm just saying, I'm not, you said.
There, there are, there are minutes in the back of your packet from the HRC hearing where the, where the church did attend. So those are, those are available. I don't know that, I, I know we have them through our court reporter. So.
Why didn't we, why didn't we, I, I just think we should at least have had some record of the church since we are making sure. I just find this, we, I believe the church should participate in this process and have been asked for their, their, their participation.
They did.
And they.
If you had attended a public hearing and not planned to sabotage through the back door, you would have had this information before trying to bring this up at the, at the 11th hour.
You're also out of order, Councilman Burgess.
I know I'm out of order. This whole meeting's out of order. This is absolutely absurd.
Councilman Kraus. Councilman.
I suggest to you, and I will continue, that what you're really doing, and whether, I'm not saying where the church's position is, but what this is, without the church saying, yes, we want to do this, you're taking all the property surrounding the church, not including the shrine because the shrine is on Catholic property and Catholic Church, you couldn't nominate the shrine. So this is a backdoor way of doing it. I think that's wrong. So this is a backdoor way of doing it, I think that's wrong. We do, the community people take care of stuff all the time, that doesn't make the, that doesn't make them owners of it, they take care, Freedom Corner, they don't own Freedom Corner, they, just because you take care of something doesn't give you sweat equity and ownership. And so I think we should have a conversation with the Catholic Church to see their position. They may be a hundred percent in favor of this, which would be great, but we should not unilaterally take away the rights of the church simply because we, whoever the we are, have the power to do it, it's not right. And I've been consistent, this is not a sabotage, I have been consistent with this argument from the day I stepped in the council. I said this over and over and over again that we should not take property rights away from people without having their participation and their consent. And that's exactly what we're doing again. We're taking the land around the Catholic Church's land without a clear indication as, and we even using the word shrine, all the language he talked about is the shrine. The shrine this, the shrine that, well, the shrine is located on church property. The whole intention of this is to nominate the shrine, that's what they say. Yet they have not talked to the shrine's owners, they have not gotten permission from the shrine's owners, they have not gotten that. That's what they should have, and if they have it, I'm a hundred percent in favor.
Thank you, are you done, Councilman?
Yep, I'm done.
Thank you, is there anyone else for second round? Councilman Wilson.
Just have to, I don't expect anyone to answer this question, but Councilman Burgess, well, maybe if if you want to have an interrogative, that's fine with me. I want to know, I I do, I do see, I do see what what's what's happening here. But my question is, what property rights do we take away if we don't, if we're not taking away their property? If we're not designating our property, what 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 consequence do they face with this property? I mean, I imagine they can still develop if they wanted to, or if they can, you know, if they still own the statue, they can do what they want to do.
Um, what happens is, they will never be able to redevelop it or change it or alter it because everything around it will be historic. So everything around it will have to stay exactly like it is, right? And and that may be, that may be what they want, I'm not saying it's not what they want, I just think that they will not be able to expand or do anything else with this, you know, in in perpetuity. Maybe a good thing, at least when you're doing that, though, you should at least have a course. I guess their intention really is to protect the shrine, that's really what this is. But they can't protect the shrine because it's owned by the church. And so this is a backdoor way of doing that and doing that without the church's participation. That's really my problem with it, is they're doing something maybe for a noble reason, but they're doing it without direct church approval, and I don't think that's right, it's it's, I don't think it's right, I don't think. I guess I really believe in the rights of the church, and whether it's a local church or a universal church. And and the church may agree, I just think it should, it should not have been done this way without the church's clear, distinct verbal approval. And I have not seen that yet, then they may have it, that's all I've asked for, is what is the church's position? I don't think we should approve this without knowing upfront what the church's position is, whatever that is.
So can I? Um, as I said, in the in the staff report, in the back, there are the minutes from the hearing from the HRC, and Christopher Poncello called in and spoke, and he said that he was not in favor of this nomination. And at that time, he hadn't, he hadn't, and he, I believe he had admitted that he didn't realize that that one parcel had been left out of the nomination. Um, I mean, what I can tell you is is that the churches, the church through Mr. Poncello has expressed an opinion about this, um.
What is their opinion again, please?
Their opinion, Mr. Poncello did not feel that this was something the church really wanted to participate in.
So the church does not approve of this nomination? Which is, which is what I thought from the beginning, it took us 40 minutes, so I'm not being Trumping.
No, Councilman, it did, if you had read the report, you would have seen that.
I'm just uncovering the truth that you could have 40 minutes ago told me, the church does not approve.
It's in the report.
It's in the staff report.
I asked it 40 minutes ago, but I asked the question 40 minutes ago. I asked that 40 minutes ago, did the church approve this, and it was crickets. I asked, was the shrine on city property or on church property, it was crickets. Now, of course, unlike Trump, I get to the truth. The truth is, the church does not support it, one. Two, this the shrine is absolutely on church's property. So therefore, like I said from the beginning, this is a subtle smart because, I mean, I agree with you, this was a very clever way of taking away the church's property rights without having the church involved. Cleverly, you nominate public land around the church, knowing that the church can't stop you, knowing that the church objects to get to your purpose, which is to protect the shrine, which is owned by the Catholic Church. I get what you want to do, it's just wrong. It's, it'll be wrong on Monday, wrong on Tuesday, wrong on Wednesday, and it's clever. I mean, I have found, when 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 people want to do this weaponized stuff, they're very clever. They were clever with the, I, that's why it takes me time to kind of unpack it, because it's very, you know.
Show up and do your job, and you would have read the report, nobody's hiding anything, there is no spurless activities taking place. You wish to interject confusion and suspicion in your self-righteous way, and it doesn't exist at all.
Councilman Kraus, just for clarity, Councilman Wilson actually has the floor, he asked for interrogatory with Councilman Burgess, which is why Councilman Burgess is speaking, so.
So Mr. Wilson, everything I said is exactly what I thought. I, the church does not approve this, the shrine is on church's land, and because they can't nominate the shrine because the church owns it, they're doing this very, very clever way of getting around the church's opposition.
Yes, but does the church get a say in these other parcels?
It does not, it just will limit what the church can do in its own parcel in perpetuity.
Okay, I'm just making clarification for technicalities here, because, you know, I I see, I see, you know, I see what the objective is, I'm just, you know, I just want to be clear on parcel by parcel and what really, you know, what really are we taking away from from the church, which is not.
The church will never be able to redevelop it, if they wants to change it, it'll be very difficult for them to do it, that's kind of what the, that's the intent. Intent is to lock in the church to this vision of what they should be in perpetuity.
It is not, it is not the intent. Councilwoman Gross reminds me, it's in hillside zoning, it is undevelopable under its zoning application. There is no covert activity taking place here, and I am highly offended at your self-righteous interjection of how you know everything about everything, and you've never even visited this site, you don't know the the importance of this site to the South Oakland community and the people that have built it and maintained it for close to 70 years.
And I would suggest that that's really not my argument. My argument is whether or not the government has a right to take away property rights from owners of property, whether directly or indirectly.
Hillside zoning was an act of city council.
Oh, in 94 something.
Right, council has, I've I've admitted from the beginning that council has the right to do this. I've, I saw them do it before, they will do it again. It's, you know, government has had rights, government had the right to have women not vote, didn't make it right. Government had the right to have black people not vote, didn't make it right. Government has the right to take away property rights, doesn't make it right. Government always gets to do these things, it doesn't make it right. I am saying this is not right. I'm not saying you can't do it, I argue, I'm, that's not my argument. My argument is the same, you should not take property rights away from owners who do not support it. That's exactly what we're, that's the attempt, the intent. And if you've written, it's obvious, all they talked about is the shrine, but then they don't nominate the shrine. If 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 this was, if this was about something else, it wouldn't mention the shrine, it mentions the shrine, yet the shrine isn't in the nomination. It's obvious what they're trying to do, they're trying to do this. And I'm just saying, it's, it is, it is, I guess, I guess, yeah, and 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 I won't talk.
The interrogatory is finished, are we on third round?
I'm done, I just, I'm I'm, I'm just saying why I think this is wrong.
Your your time is up, is there any further conversation, we're still on second round, Councilman Coghill.
Yeah, let me just sum it up like this for me, you know, Councilman Burgess, I understand what you're saying. However, this property was donated by a woman who owned the entire parcel at one time. She donated a small piece of it to the City of Pittsburgh, sounds like for this memorial. Whether it prevents the Catholic Church from developing that site or doing what they want on it, as long as that site is on the City of Pittsburgh property, so be it, it's on our land, as far as I'm concerned. Again, Councilman Burgess, I, you know, I want to have this conversation with the Historic Preservation Society on many topics, many issues. But this one here, I I am not going to get in the way of this, I'll be happy to support it today, regardless if the church agrees or disagrees with it, and I'm glad we clarified at least their statement, Sarah had mentioned, that they didn't agree with it, but as long as it's not on the church's property, you know, it's irrelevant to me, so I'll be happy to support it, let's put it to a vote.
Thank you, Councilman Coghill, any final discussion? If not, I will weigh in, only because I, at one point, I also represented this area with the redistricting that went to Councilman Kraus, so I actually have been to this site and I'm very familiar with it. My understanding, despite all of what we just went through, was this site was created by residents of the community, they took care of it, they managed it for decades. At some point, there was an owner who gave, who donated a piece of hers to the diocese. However, they will always stand against historical nomination. Um, it's, I think it's more of just a sort of a principle thing, not necessarily whether or not they actually support the statue or the shrine. Also think the shrine is the entirety of the site. In order to get to this site, you have to, one, know how to actually find it, which was hard for me when I first looked, represented the area, but then to be able to traverse it, to get where it is. And then the other reason is because there's nothing else you can actually do with this hillside. Um, you cannot redevelop it, there's nothing else we can do with it other than maintain what is currently there. And so for those reasons, I'm supportive. So, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye, opposed.
One opposite, one one opposed, the bill is recommended. That does exhaust our agenda for today, we do have some meeting announcements. Uh, this afternoon at 2:00 PM, a cable cast public hearing is scheduled via the Zoom platform on Bill 198 regarding the zoning code as it relates to eliminating minimum parking requirements for single-family attached dwellings. Um, to register for this hearing, please call the clerk's office by 12 noon Wednesday. You will also, you may also submit written testimony via email to cityclerksoffice@pittsburghpa.gov. Next week's council's regular and standing committee meetings are scheduled for next Tuesday and Wednesday, respectively, both at 10:00 AM. Call the city clerk's office at 9:00 AM the morning of the meeting to register to speak. And Wednesday, October 7th at 1:00 PM, there's a cable cast posted agenda discussion scheduled via the Zoom platform on justice-related and human services. Um, just so members are aware, I will not be able to attend the hearing this afternoon. However, the topic is of interest to me, because it will have a a great, a serious effect within my district, and so I will watch it after the fact and then work with members respectively. Any other announcements from members, Councilwoman?
Madam Clerk, I also cannot attend that meeting this afternoon.
Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, tonight, Wednesday, September 30th, there's a meeting on the neighborways that Domi is hosting, so it's not a city council hearing. Um, and I'm actually clicking all around because I'm looking for the date in the email about it. Uh, so it is definitely tonight, and I'm looking for the time, and I think it's 6 o'clock. Um, I apologize that, is anyone on the call who can clarify that time or date, or Madam Clerk, you don't happen to have that, do you? Councilwoman Strasburger, do you happen to have that on your, in front of the time, in front of you on your calendar? There's a kind of dummy, dummy summit on neighborways. Is there neighborways happening across the city, these are the streets where um, Domi is making changes so that cars cannot exceed the speed limit as they do on many, especially like the tertiary streets, the streets that run through neighborhoods that now people are trying to cut through because their phones or apps are telling them to. So I apologize, I do want to, you could probably go to the Domi website, which I didn't try. Um, there've been different kinds of infrastructure changes from everything from traffic circles to um, speed humps, um, to just kind of narrowing intersections, pedestrian safety. Uh, thank you to my staff person, James Murray, who just texted me on my screen right in front of me, it is definitely at 6:00 PM. If you go to the city website and go to the Domi page on the city website, there's a Zoom link that, so you can log in, it's a public meeting, that's a summit about all things neighborways. I just wanted to clarify your attention because it's been a topic of conversation across many parts of the city, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Strasburger.
Thank you, I'm sorry that we don't have all council members here still at the meeting, I just wanted to say that um, I was really concerned with the tone that I heard us talking to each other with during this meeting. People more than ever right now need leadership, they're craving leadership, and I don't think, I think it's very dangerous when the tone and the tenor of national conversations and politics starts to come down at the local level. We are all on the same team, and we are all working to move the city forward, and if we can't work with each other, then it's going to hurt the Pittsburgh residents more than anything. So for those who aren't still on this call, I'm going to follow up with them, I'm going to talk with them about that as well. But I felt a strong need to say that out loud because I was, um, I'm really concerned about the road that we're going down with the tone and the tenor of our conversation at this meeting. Perfectly fine to disagree with one another, I don't think it's okay to uh, to emulate some of our national elected officials, thanks.
Towards towards that point, Councilwoman Strasburger, um, doing this via Zoom, also very hard to sort of moderate this conversation because at any point in time, one of us could just start start talking. Um, while at least four of us were out of order during the meeting, I actually went into the participant section to see if I could mute members as a way to get it under control, I don't have that ability. I'm not listed as a host, I will talk with David and Joy and and the staff to see if whoever's chairing the meeting can also be listed as a host. Um, that way we can actually try to control it in a better sense, when members are not supposed to be talking. One of us, when Madam President is hosting, or and I am, or when anyone else like Reverend had to do yesterday, we could actually then better control it. Um, seeing no further discussion from members, we need a motion to excuse the absent member, approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
I can, second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.